All right, welcome everybody to the September meeting of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. Thanks for being here. We will start with our minutes from the August meeting. If I can get a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
And I have page nineteen. Page nineteen says Alderman Peterson stated her concern. If we just leave out the rest of that sentence. Alderman Peterson stated that a concern. Leave out the rest of that sentence, leave out the "it." Say her concern was the potential for the lots that had joined the applicant's lots. So, just leave out the rest of that sentence and the "it" and let it keep on going into the next one.
All right, very good. Any other comments? All right, seeing none.
Do I need a...
Yeah, I guess we'll need an amendment to that motion.
To amend it. Do I need a...
Yeah, show me. Yeah, that's in the... They go to me a second. The motion goes.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Back to the main motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity if you have items that are not on the agenda tonight and want to speak to the commission, please come forward and we'll give you a couple of minutes to give us your thoughts. All right, we see none, then we'll move on to the announcements.
Yes, this is just a reminder that we will be having a training on non-conforming uses on Monday, the 26th between 1:00 and 3:00. All of the plan commissioners are invited, and I believe you'd already received an invitation, but we would really like you to come and hear what we have to say. Also, the Tennessee American Planning Association Conference is the end of next week, and that is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Again, you've received information on it, but we would encourage you to come and participate or hear what they have to say. Anybody who's interested in that, please let Brenda know and we will get you registered.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, let's move on to... Is there any non-agenda items anyone wants to present to the commission to consider tonight? All right, I see none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there two separate agendas tonight for this? We're all one, okay. All right, we've got, let's see, five items that are on consent right now and one item that's on non-consent. Item 10 is non-consent. Is there any others that anyone would like to pull from the agenda? Consent agenda? Alma, did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, then is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the consent agenda being items 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12. All right, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me. Opposed? The ayes have it, we'll move on to item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, this is the amendment to the land use plan for character area Berry Chapel. This particular land use amendment has gone through a number of public meetings, including a meeting where we had forty-four residents of the area attend, open house. We've gotten a lot of comments. Between the workshop that you had the last month and the current time, we have received additional comments from people who have some interest in some developments in two separate areas, Special Area 2 and Special Area 4. We have met with the property owners in Special Area 2 and have talked to them about how they might be able to develop a piece of property that they currently own. You will find in your staff memorandum, staff's sort of way of handling this situation that both protects the city and allows the property to be developed, but developed within the guidelines of the land use plan as we are currently proposing it. So, I would ask that you take a look at the new revised memorandum on page 2 under development forms. Staff is recommending that you include that on page 12 and 13. And also, we are looking at the staff presenting three options for review of a piece of property that is a parcel that was part of the 2004 plan for suburban conventional and is now moved into rural. And I would ask Katie... Katie has done an amazing job with this particular land use amendment, and I would like her to be able to present her findings and to let you know a little more about the land use plan for Berry Chapel.
Good evening. Kind of following up with what Catherine had said, I did want to focus on Special Area 4 first. This really doesn't deal with any changes to the language in the document. It actually deals with the boundaries, specifically the southeastern boundary. There's a larger map in the file if you wanted to use it. That would be easy. Okay. All right. Option 1 is the southeastern boundary will remain as it is outlined in the attached packets that you have, so what you see in front of you in your hands would be option 1. That is to include Clearview Baptist Church on the southwest and move the parcels... I do have the numbers for that. Seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-five out and into Special Area 3, suburban conventional, which is how it's classified. Option 2, and feel free to ask questions as we go through, option 2 is to maintain the 2004 lines as they are. Option 3 is to move south to include parcel 73 in response to the letter from a citizen in your packets, which would be 2004 lines plus one parcel to the south. And option 4 is that all boundaries... I think I jumped ahead. I apologize for that. Option 4 would be the boundary will be maintained... I think I'm duplicating here. I apologize. Let's look at three options. And if you have any questions to clarify, feel free to ask.
Can you, if we can go back to that map, I'd love to see which one's parcel 73.
Absolutely. Parcel 73 is down to... Right there, where Micah's touching.
Speak to the hand, right?
Absolutely. That is currently not included in the 2004 lines. That option would be to bring that down, to include that.
And the option 1 where you were moving to include Clearview...
Absolutely.
That's all of the purple?
That's what...
That's as it's shown.
Okay. So, that becomes 1 instead of 4. Is that right?
No.
That would... Previously, that was in Special Area 7, which is classified as rural with attached and detached residential uses and civic and institutional. So, that's just bringing those lines down to create a hard boundary for Special Area 4.
Got it, okay. All right, anything else?
If you want to move on to Special Area 2, we can do that.
Please.
Special Area 2, we are seeking guidance on this one as well. There's the option that's in the attached information that you have in your packets as option 1, which I'm sure most of you have read through at this point. Option 2 would be what's included in the revised agenda in front of you. This would be either option, we would have no staff opposition either way. Each allows for development, limited, protects city interests, and addresses neighborhood concerns. So, regardless of which way y'all feel is correct, we would see either being fitting to fit.
And that's just a text change. That's not related to a map change. There's only one map option.
All right, any questions about Special Area 2? Okay, you want to go to 3?
Special Area 3?
Yes.
Really no changes to Special Area 3 that we're seeking guidance on at this time. The only thing that would affect Special Area 3 is the change in boundary to 4 on the southeast corner.
Mr. Chairman, at some point, let's go back to Special Area 1.
Okay. You want to do that now?
If we wish. Special Area 1 on the... And I've got three things here I'm having to look at. Okay, on page 12, on page 12, number 3 at the top, I believe, is the one that I'm interested There were some street connections, including Echo Lane northward and Scramblers Knob eastward, that there was a great deal of opposition from the attendees of the... At the workshop before, and I believe that I can take care of this by just removing number 3. Is that right?
Yes.
Because it says new subdivisions shall... Should provide street connections in all directions. And if you look at the topography there and the terrain there, it's just... It wouldn't be good to add a road there, to have it connect with other things. I mean, it's just... And as I say, there was a great deal of opposition from the people who lived around there to having a connection.
And staff did want to look at that for connectivity purposes, but we do agree with Alderman Peterson that this hasn't been engineered. We know the topography is problematic, and we have no objection to removing it.
If maybe it is a compromise, just removing where it says particularly those two?
Well, that's possible. That's what I was just looking at because I didn't have my little map from the one where the people had the concerns there. That might be okay, but you know, it says provide street connections in all directions.
And that's actually a zoning requirement now, except if there are topographical issues that may include it.
That's right.
Leaving that policy in would at least match with what the zoning requirements are. And if there are... If it's impractical to connect, then it wouldn't...
I do think the two that are named right here were the ones where the people had their little, you know, red dots saying, "Don't do this, please."
So, striking that would be fine.
There were a lot of them, not just one or two. I could probably count here, maybe two dozen.
That's fine.
So, okay, so, we're thinking then that maybe taking... On that number 3 there, just taking out particularly an extension of...
Right, particularly an extension.
Okay. Whenever we get ready to make a motion, we can do that.
Excuse us, I think before we start making motions that we have to hear the public...
Whenever the time comes.
Yeah, we do, and I probably have gotten in front of myself here on time. But Katie, why don't you continue with your presentation?
Right.
When you're finished, let me know.
I really am finished at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
But if you need my input, I'm happy to provide it.
Then let's move to citizen input here. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to come forth and give us your comments or thoughts? Please do. Come up to the podium so we can hear you. We're going to try to limit conversation to two minutes per person. If you could let us know your name, where you live, unless you're famous like certain people that we all know.
Infamous.
Infamous?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dwight Kaiser. I am the president of Kaiser Voger &amp; Design, a local design and planning firm. I'm actually here tonight representing Mr. Al Buckley, who resides at 6776 Sawyer Road and who owns roughly fifty-eight plus or minus acres, which is the entirety of the northern parcels, the parcels north of Linwood Way and Gateway Village. I had the opportunity to speak to some of you all at the public workshop we had several weeks ago. I certainly appreciated that. I'd also like to say that since then, we have had follow-up meetings with the planning staff. I really appreciate Katie and Catherine's work and time in working with us. I will ditto Catherine's comments before about Katie. I think she's a keeper. We really do appreciate staff working with us, and the option 2, I assume Catherine, as you've quoted it tonight, we are fully in support of and would beg your consideration and approval of this. It, in many respects, holds the development potential of this site still in the hands of the City of Franklin. I will note that this property is zoned agricultural, so any type of development that would be considered in the future, and there truly is nothing considered at this time, would require a rezoning submission to the city, requiring a vote by Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Planning Commission, as well as a master plan, as I understand the language that staff has recommended. So, we are fully in support of that and ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Okay, all right, anyone else?
My name's Steve Rogers. I live at 554 Franklin Road, and I'm the owner of parcel 73 that you were just discussing a few minutes ago. I hadn't come here with the intent of speaking, but the three adjacent property owners to me that are in the front row asked me to come and say a few words, so I'll try. I wasn't privy to the three or four options that you talked about for Special Area 4, but the way it's drawn on this map moves that line that currently exists north three parcels up to the Nazarian Church. And we're in agreement that that's not something that we would like to see happen. We would like to see the line as it currently exists moved south, ideally to Country Road, but because that establishes a hard boundary that you all are interested in maintaining. But if that's not possible, we certainly wish you to consider moving... Was it option 3 that moved it south? I didn't have the...
Changing the names. Option 3, southeastern boundary would move to include parcel 73.
Yeah, that would be my personal preference for your consideration. We've, over the past four or five years, there's about five property owners that have gone together to try and offer this for sale. We were told by the Planning Commission at that time that they would like to see a mixed use for that development, for that area, with perhaps one developer. I kind of get the sense that maybe the thinking of the Planning Commission staff has changed about that idea, but nonetheless, the way the line is currently drawn, there's no really good justifiable rationale for where it was located in 2004, and we would like to see it move south and certainly not north up to the Nazarian Church. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just want to kind of concur on what Steve said. I'm Gary Fagan. Have owned parcel 75 in Area 3, which is right where the borderline is now drawn, and I concur that, you know, we would like to have the line brought south all the way down to Country Road Estates as well, too. My parcel in particular has been under the overlay, I guess, since '04 as a mixed-use development. We've had it marketed for that basically since '07 as that use and have it listed right now, and there are certainly a couple developers who are interested in property right now as used as a mixed use, so certainly I would benefit from leaving it an overlay that it currently is in. And, you know, the thing that my concern about with the way the Gateway development is currently taking off and really growing and expanding over there, if they do leave my parcel and the other parcels across the street going south to Country Road as a residential use, I'm not sure, you know, who would want to, you know, actually live right across the street from the development that's going on over there right now since it is so robust at this time. So, I would just like to ask the board to leave the parcels as they are as a mixed use, particularly parcel 75.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can you point to 75?
I was going to say, that was the old boundary, is that right? The old... The old number 4 was south to the south of...
Yeah.
Is it... Where is...
It's right here.
That's the existing one, right?
That's the current boundary.
The current boundary.
2004.
And 73 is one beyond.
73 is this parcel there.
Okay.
That's yours.
Sure, Micah's cursor is currently is 73. Now, it's in 74, and this one is 75. So, it just goes right up.
But under the current land use plan, it encompassed 75.
The line was drawn between 73 and 74.
Well, let me ask... Well, let's get some other comments and I'll...
Hey, I think we've seen you before.
Speaking as a resident of 103 Century Oak Drive...
Okay, I'll let you speak again then.
Thank you very much. I am a resident and backup to the Clearview Baptist Church, and I am against moving the activity center south. The Clearview Baptist Church property has been built. I'm concerned about creep south along Franklin Road and considering the suburban and rural character that has been constantly stated that we need to support a Franklin Road, and I'm certainly in support of that. I don't understand why we need to change the land use designation on a already built and functioning property and would urge you to maintain its current land use designation as opposed to adding activity center to it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, then we will... I'll entertain a motion from the commission.
Okay, just a motion to approve the character...
We would need to approve one of the options, right? As we've got three options on the table.
Should we have the main motion first?
Yes, let's do the options one more time.
Yeah, Katie, why don't you?
I'll be clear this time. I apologize earlier. Option 1, the southeastern boundary will remain as it is outlined in the attached packet that you have, and Clearview Baptist Church would be included. Option 2, the southeastern boundary will be maintained at the 2004 location, which is just north of parcel 73, and include Clearview Baptist Church. Option 3, the southeastern boundary will move south to include parcel 73 and include Clearview Baptist Church. And option 4 is that all boundaries will be maintained as they were in 2004.
There's something to be said about that, you know, in favor of that. I've had the question about why we include Clearview Baptist whenever it's...
That's right.
Absolutely built and covers a great deal there. I mean, I don't know why we would want to make that an activity center when it's already built there.
The thought behind that was that that land use decision was made to basically have that as a large campus development, and so it provides a hard edge to the activity center and then the rural development south. So, since that decision had already been made, it's kind of an existing condition, and there's several parcels in between Gateway and Clearview Baptist that, under the 2008 zoning ordinance, were zoned civic-institutional but aren't really used for that. So, getting them rezoned right now is difficult because the policy for it is residential, even though it's between a campus church and Gateway, so that...
But there is really a difference between Gateway and the church. I mean, what I'm trying to say is those are two, to me, entirely different entities, and not only that, it's just that there's a real difference in use there. That, you know, Gateway is just every... Everything, everything, every inch is developed, I'll put it that way. But on the other hand, if we're talking about going down through parcel 73 or down to Country Road, I mean, now that Country Road is a residential neighborhood, I mean, that's, you know, a residential subdivision that is built. So, I'm a little bit concerned about going all the way down to there. That's the one reason I was thinking maybe the boundaries where they were in 2004, you know, maybe as kind of a compromise in there. I don't know.
You want to make that motion?
I guess I can. So...
If you want to at least make that motion for discussion, then we can always amend...
Okay, I'll make the motion. And have some discussion. This would mean the boundaries would be maintained in the 2004 locations, and you want to...
Do we have a picture of that?
That'd be option 4?
Do you want to have to show that?
Yeah. If you think they're existing boundaries, whether they're... I'm sorry. There's a current?
Thank you, Kathy. I've got my copy of the existing, so... Yeah, there it is right there.
So, that's the current, and that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, well, let's have some discussion then.
Now, that is... That covers Gateway on the west, is that right?
Yes.
That's where it stops, at Gateway?
Yes.
It actually goes...
A little further. A little further, but not...
I think it includes some of Clearview's properties.
So, it goes to parcel south.
Does it not?
These two parcels here are the ones that are kind of frozen in civic-institutional zoning, but they don't need a policy to change it to anything other than residential. And whether the uses are different, it would still be awkward to have a single-family residential, which is what the policy calls for here, in between a church and a mixed-use development.
And that's what we're trying to fix.
If it could at least include the parcels not owned by the church, I think that would...
Make more sense. That would help.
If you include that, then include 73, too. Yeah, we're going to leave that like that.
So, what... Would that...
If you include those, include 73 on the other side of them.
Okay.
Because you're on the side.
Okay. Now, tell me where Country Roads is right there, though. See, Country Roads is right there. It's on both sides of that road, which is country...
But you're changing... Changing this at the back of the white line.
But you're changing both sides of the line.
Yes, but I want to tell you what, if you back up to that, you don't necessarily want mixed use right in your backyard.
We do have transitional use buffers that would be a part of that zoning ordinance.
Yeah, right.
It's going to be a challenge deciding where do you stop that line.
It is, it is.
If you go to Country Road, then you've got people facing another development, and you have that same issue, so...
Well, that's the reason I kind of liked option 4.
That's part of the commercial creep that we talked about.
It is.
I mean, but, as I say, that was just my best guess on it, but...
What is the lot that's adjacent to 73? It looks like a little carve-out. There, right there.
That's somebody's house, isn't it?
Lot 72.
Yeah.
Okay. If you're looking for a number, because it is referenced in the letter from the citizen
as well.
Okay.
How many more feet is that lot 73 from the property line 74? How far down is it?
Can you... I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
You're asking about the frontage of 73?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what the frontage along Hillsborough or Franklin Road is?
I'm guessing it's about 250 feet. Maybe 300, pretty close to that.
So, wait, would if you're talking about including 73 and not 72, or including 72?
I wasn't privy to this three, four, or five minutes ago.
Because, see, that's going to just make a little hook back behind 72.
I think you would. I think we would be looking for a hard boundary somewhere.
It would make more sense. It cannot be Country Road itself, though, in my opinion, because they already have houses over on the north side of Country Road. Absolutely.
One of the lot numbers, one of the lot numbers that are adjacent to Clearview that we talked about, those three parcels?
I unfortunately do not know.
71, 70?
I think all references would be the parcels not currently owned by Clearview Baptist Church, and we can provide that, those numbers later.
I just want to be able to reference it in a motion if somebody wants to make a motion. Anyone want to...
Are you talking about two lots or three lots that are north of Clearview Baptist Church?
Those three parcels there.
Okay, there's the two that are...
The smaller and the one long one.
The long, deep one, yeah.
And none of those are part of the church campus? Or is it one and...
I think maybe...
They are.
I know this one's not. The smallest one is definitely not, because we've talked to that property owner previously. I don't know. I don't know about any of the others.
And so, you're saying all of that is civic-institutional from the lots that are on Century...
From they were owned down to...
Century Oak up to there? And they got rezoned whenever the church was rezoned?
And yet, they're not a part of the church campus. Yeah, we got to do something, I think.
Well, I'll just stick with option 4. I mean, you know, I'd be happy to hear something else. I, I mean, you know, I'd be happy to hear something else, but that's.
So, question. Option, so would option 2, okay, option 2 would stay just north of Lot 73, correct? Well, actually, option 3 is the one that would move it south to include these. It's option 3.
Correct, and it would also include the Clearview Baptist campus in its entirety and the two par, two parcels?
The two parcels.
And you're saying include 72 in that one?
We can alter it to do that.
We can include 72.
Now, 72 are part of a coun, is 70, 72 is not a part of Country Roads as it stands? I don't think, however, back then, they could have been, you know, but I think it's just the ones on the road.
All right, do we want to vote on option 4 to remain as is, or is there?
Was there a motion?
Do we want to have?
I, I made the motion and got a second.
There's a second, so do we want to amend that motion, or are we good with that?
What was the motion?
The motion is to.
Option 4.
The boundary remain as is.
It's leave it as it is. Which is the 2004 land use amendment.
I'd like to amend it to include, is it Lot 70, Parcel 73, and then the small parcel in front of the Frank, front Franklin Road, and then any parcels north of Clearview Baptist that are not owned by the church.
So you'd be changing it to option 3?
So 73, 72.
That would be option 3.
Is that option 3?
Option 3.
Well, now it would.
No, no.
Because option 3 is all.
All the way down.
It's a hybrid.
So is option 2 plus.
2 plus.
Yes.
I would like to amend it to include Parcell 73, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the small parcel that's in front of it on Franklin Road there, I don't know the number to.
72.
Can we go to the other mail?
And then any parcels north of Clearview Baptist Church that are not owned by the church.
Right.
And that way we can see where.
That would get it.
Okay, now can you point those out?
I believe it's.
The motion that he.
All of these.
All of those, yes.
But not, not the, not the western side.
Right.
And take out the western side.
It would basically parallel.
Right.
Okay, there's a proper motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Amendment, okay. Any discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Does this also include the changes to Special Area 2 and the changes to Special Area 1 mentioned, or is this?
One area at a time.
Special Area 2.
Special Area 2.
So, so really, this is, is this an amendment? This could be an amendment to option 4, because, see, we haven't voted on option 4 yet.
Right. This would amend option 4, and then that would, I guess it would mean we wouldn't really have.
And that, that would actually take care of not including.
Exactly.
Clearview.
Clearview, right.
Right.
Can we go back and vote on the main motion?
Okay.
The main, we haven't, we don't have a motion on the main motion.
But what he did was he is adopting option 4, but just going down a little bit further.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, then we're back to the main motion. So we're basically saying in the main motion.
Option 4 changed.
That 4 is revised as per the amendment, okay? All right, any other discussion about the main motion?
I'd like to amend Special Area 2 to include staff's comments and the attached.
Oh, wait, we, we don't have a main motion on taking, doing the entire, I believe, we do not have a motion on accepting this change in the character area yet. We're just looking at this one, please, as I understand.
Special Area 4.
Yeah, we're just looking at Special Area 4.
Area 4. And then we can move to Special Area 2 and any other areas you might want to consider.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, so back to the main motion relative to Special Area 4 revised. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, okay? Is there a motion, Greg, you want to do on Area 2?
To adopt the language as revised by staff for Special Area 2?
Second.
Okay, there's a second, any discussion?
I know that in Special Area 7, there was 150-foot corridor setback there because that would be consistent with the setback of existing architecture along the roads there. I'm just curious, the corridor setback of the 150 feet along Linwood Way, is there precedent set for that already, or is that just something that would be?
That's part of the rural character in the land use plan, and because of that, we are looking at the, either the view shed study or the 150-foot buffer.
And that is noted in the revised under connectivity number 1, if you need to know.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the staff's comments on it, Special Area 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, is there any other areas to adopt here?
Yes, on Area 1.
Area 1, okay.
That, on page 12, that number 3, and so the motion would be to revise number 3, leaving out particularly the extension of Echo Lane northward and Scramblers Knob eastward.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
My second.
Move to seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, that's, should take care of that, right? Anybody else? All right, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, wait, we have it done, we have it done this month.
On adoption of the land use plan?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm moving to, I'm moving to. I'm making a motion to move to adopt.
Silly motion.
The land use plan as amended.
Second, okay. Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, how about adjourn?
Move, Frank, Kevin.
So move, we are adjourned.